So, welcome back to our People's Inquiry Hearing. We have already sent notes out to the speakers this afternoon. We've got a mixture of speakers. And we're starting off with Shane Hyde, who's in Northland, who some of you may already know because he's one of the contributors to our website for a video. And we've also got Nora from Northland, Nadine from Taup Island. And then we're going to end the afternoon hearing from Hannah, who's going to talk about the glyphosate, impacts of glyphosate on the environment. So, yes, welcome. Let's, let's get straight back into it, shall we? If, unless there's any pressing questions, anybody wants to, to ask? Any of the commissioners want to mention anything? No, we're all good. Okay.
I think Emma does. No, okay.
Emma, you're okay? Okay. Great. So, we've got, we should have on the panelists, if the technology has, has worked, we should have Shane able to unmute himself. If you want to unmute on the bottom of your screen, Shane, you should have a camera, a video icon and an unmute. Ah, there he is. That's brilliant. Excellent. So, over to you, Shane, to share a brief introduction about who you are and your connection to the People's Inquiry and also your testimony.
My name's Shane Hyde. I'm based in Kaua. Historically, I've been chemically poisoned in the workplace. Life journey's on. That happened in 2006 and we're now in 2021. Life carries on. I thank all those, those dedicated individuals who have made this possible. You're providing a voice to the many victims of unintentional poisoning. And I congratulate you for being brave and coming, standing up in front of and doing this. I've probably, I've formed something and I probably just read through that as quickly as I can. And we have questions at the end, if that's possible. Everybody happy for that? Yep.
Absolutely, Shane. I'll, I'll give you just a quick heads up a few minutes before we, we finish for questions.
Yep, cool. Thank you. Chemical poisoning is a daily occurrence in our society, within our workplaces and in our homes. Most chemical injury events are delivered through repetitive contact, causing incremental decline in wellness through chronic poisoning. Most go without identification of causation, without medical evidence or any financial assistance during their time of need. Instead, the decline of health is often labelled a disease. I understand a disease to be a combination of symptoms arriving at a common endpoint dependent on each individual's genetic variance. The Poison Centre, when asked, suggested doctor-reported cases of agricultural chemical poisoning is extremely low. OIA showed just four reported cases in the information I received. My poisoning event was not recorded by the first consulting doctors, so no reporting could have been received from the Poison Centre. The New Zealand Poison Centre is a data information-equipped institute designed to respond to the doctor treating nose acutely poisoned. They still have no wish to advise me directly. The New Zealand Poison Centre offers no assistance for those chronically poisoned, nor remedial help to those suffering prolonged chemical-related injuries. EPA were approached, but suggested they were totally reliant on the chemicals manufacturer's information and workplace accident reporting. The chemical company will not respond to my technical questions and my workplace injury at the time was not recorded. WorkSafe has not yet determined chemical poisoning to be a physical injury to the body. ACC requires physical workplace injury to be acknowledged. ACC engaged a toxicologist from the New Zealand Poison Centre independently to review the chemicals I had been exposed to. The main herbicide of concern, inclusive of all ingredients of causing harm, were not included, considered or reviewed. There was no acceptance of my critique and correction of seemingly deliberate misinformation. As it was claimed, I am not a medically qualified person, though nor was the toxicologist a medically qualified person. ACC stated I have no medical evidence. The burden of proof is mine. I was advised most, I was advised most use the court to resolve, being told this when I had my last $35 in my bank account. The original doctor did not collect medical evidence when it was available. He did not file a workplace injury with ACC. He did not release me from duty for employment and being self-employed wins offered no financial relief. Imagine being in a reoccurring COVID lockdown, level four, level three, for three-plus years without any financial support, let alone being forced to work whilst being physically and mentally incapacitated. When seeking causation of symptoms, the DHB informed my recent doctor they would not assist. They declined me gaining specialist advice and medical reporting required by ACC to remove my burden. When self-funding my own research, seeking confirmation of causation, I was advised by ACC the testing was not recognised as medical evidence. Genome testing to identify chemical susceptibility was not recognised nor funded by the Minister of Health, so it's not recognised by ACC. Genome testing traits displayed my poor metabolism of organic solvents, the main ingredient of most herbicides. Research papers dated 1995 also discuss these genetic traits. Today, in 2021, only 26 years on from this dated research, our health providers have little, if any, understanding of this tool and the possible preventative of medical care, nor the simple, nor are the simple tests state-funded. ACC has stripped us of both personal and business income. They have put debt collectors on to us during our time of need. They did this from a position of legal monopoly with a promise of no-fault workplace injury care. But they did not deliver due legal requirements controlled by others. The medical evidence identifying the physical injuries have not been met. I ask if this ACC conduct is socially acceptable. To be socially acceptable, to be lawful, to happily take one's personal earnings when no service contract has been entered directly, whilst leaving this man and his family, who willingly contributed for the benefit of society without the safety net of workplace injury healthcare as promised by ACC to society. Society through government has contracted ACC, not me. Regardless that 90,000 people, based on a percentage of population, will have similar genetic traits as me in New Zealand, having a slow metabolism of organic solvents, the state has shown no interest in delivering preventative healthcare measures to those who will be exposed at varying levels to organic solvents. Those people who will have potentially higher risk of acute or chronic environmental chemical exposure unknowingly. Our family has lived without since 2006, whilst our state has protected a chemical industry to earn profits and live comfortable lifestyles. The state has focused on production volumes and percentages of return in one's self-well creation, not society wellbeing or environmental care and enhancement. Health professionals and state policy advisors are another industry that has become dependent on clipping the same chemical poison ticket. But in my case, have delivered neither medical evidence nor remedial care. An effective business model could be simplistically observed as one that enables collateral damage whilst claiming good, that then enables remedial care or restoration. COVID-19 has stimulated our Minister of Health to consider prevention to vaccines, testing using saliva and possibly genome testing. Strangely, genome testing and detection of personal traits, chemical poisoning causation and prevention is still somewhat forgotten. I ask myself, what is the difference between COVID-19 and chemical poisoning? My conclusion is most believe COVID-19 can affect any person within any position within society, not just those in workplaces or living spaces contaminated by household, industrial or agricultural chemicals. Are we the workers? Are we, the workers and our families, considered expendable in the hands of those seeking financial comfort? Many are now aware we did not stop trying to support communities with their employment and enhancement of healthy living environments. We continue to deliver sustainable land management design and tools to provide an alternative to aerial 1080. The automated bait station concept was publicly displayed in 2014 after five years active field development during real-life work. We can state with confidence there is an alternative management system to aerial 1080 anywhere a person can walk. I can state with confidence, as innovator, I have been declined developmental assistance due being subjectively isolated to be anti-1080 by those with bias towards aerial 1080 use. Irma directed in 2007, 1080 should not be used. Oh, sorry, 1080 should only be used where no alternative is available. I have been financially punished for providing an economic and effective alternative solution to that of aerial 1080, where a person can tender to operate. We have not, we have received not a cent of government financial support nor innovation research funding to commercialise environment. This was done in 2017. Yet, the delivery, yet we deliver an economic and effective pest control alternative that reduces toxins within the conservation primary industry and urban environment. We can state with confidence, as yet, we have had no opportunity to economically compete against designated aerial 1080 pest control work on public conservation lands. Our last contracted opportunity with Doc was completed in 2017. I can see similar business traits emerging. The perfect business model appears again. Collateral damage whilst claiming benefits to conservation, remedial care and restoration. Is conservation in this country just another big business game? My only experience of those New Zealand decision-makers from the public service since 2006 is denial of access. I ask, why is this? I have tried to deliver benefit to society my whole life, seeking enhancements to wellbeing and opportunities to society, business and environment. I ask you, the panel, the public of New Zealand, if we all should accept the continued collateral damage to our environment to put at risk our spiritual and physical realm, that of being humans within the environment. Should legally defended policy, international investments and conflicts of interest erode at the quality of life we endure in New Zealand? We are told climate emergency is knocking at our door. Why not investigate causation? Find those responsible and hold them accountable? Is every dollar carries environmental burden? Thank you.
Thank you, Shane, for sharing that. It's a very depressing picture, isn't it? And I really, we all really appreciate you sharing your, your personal story, which is so interconnected with your professional identity as well, isn't it? And all of these things, you know, that's something that's close to my heart because this, this, in a different way, this topic has impacted my own professional identity in ways that are beyond, you know, anybody's control. So, I really appreciate you sharing that. And, and thank you for your submission and thank you for your testimony. So, can I ask the commissioners whether you've got any questions for Shane? There's kind of two different topics there to, to talk about that are interconnected.
I'm, I'm happy to start and that's maybe with some of the basics and the background. So, so Shane, I'm, you know, not the, not a pesticide chemical expert, but I deal with the law and that side of things. So, so I watched your video and I thought that was both very well done, the interview, very well done. Thank you for, so well done and informative. So, yeah, thank, thank you for that and to the editing of the, the different topics and pieces in there. So, you had a, you had a backpack with spray on your back and you tripped and you got covered when it spilled out of the backpack, am I right in remembering that?
That's correct. That was, I believe it was a longer-term use of chemicals and that was the final trigger.
That's right. Yes. And you had been done and that was. But, so even if you went to the doctor, I recall, two weeks later with hair fell out. I'm really surprised. It seems that everything that you say that should have happened after that stemmed from the fact that it wasn't reported as a workplace safety incident or workplace, you know, accident, wasn't reported on the poisons register. And, and the doctor didn't classify it as whatever you had stemming from an accident. And so therefore you didn't get an ACC. So, or any of those normal legal avenues weren't triggered. And so is it, was it down simply to that initial doctor's assessment? And that they, one didn't believe there was a chemical poisoning to start with? And or the doctor, do you think, just was, was all and slash or ignorant of those reports and that reporting that should have been done? And I, I'll be honest, I don't know if doctors are the only ones that can report these. Are we not allowed to have other ways of reporting? And that might be a separate, you know, thing to look at. But am I right in thinking that basically everything stemmed from that? And so have been fighting ever since?
To clarify that one, yes. My normal doctor of the day was overbooked for four days. And when your hair is falling out, you really want to see a doctor. So, I ended up at another practice who had alopecia. And the researching, the doctor's actual knowledge base, he was a surgeon, not actually a GP, but he was providing a position of GP. And when he seen me, he was having a cup of tea. Then he gave me five minutes and told me I had alopecia. Go home. Don't worry about it. So, naturally you believe in your doctor and it's not something that I would ever do again. I'm sure there's lots of very good doctors out there, but I would say get informed.
Okay. Thanks. Sorry. And so maybe just if I then turn to the kinds of solutions we need to be looking at, because it shouldn't be your responsibility to self-diagnose and, you know, push. Like you say, that's why you go, you go to the expert and you get them to figure it out. So, it does sound like there's a lot more information that needs to be out there as well as on simple procedural reporting kinds of things. But then also the substance about, you know, the testing and the symptoms and the toxins. And I'll leave it there and I'll, and I'll hand it to those who are more expert in that side of things. But I'm very interested in ACC and, and I, well, if we come back to it, I can ask you questions about ACC and, you know, legal aid and challenging them, that kind of things. But I'll, I'll start with the basics first.
I would just like to mention that I got poisoned in around November and was coming into summer. By March, I was struggling to make a full sentence and I still struggle with that side of it today. I had to work on it a lot. So, I guess with chemical poisoning, the, the symptoms are quite gradual, but they're progressive. So, even a doctor at the time, he will consider the most obvious. And that's what ACC is focused on, hair loss. They haven't looked at any other symptoms. So, yeah, it's just how the cookie crumbles at the moment. In 2006, there was a lot of different thinking back then than what there is today. The procedural steps have changed. But unfortunately, because it was 2006, the, the ACC and the healthcare system aren't picking up those people left behind.
Well, I have a question or two, Shane. One of the reasons you don't get any benefit from going to physicians is because they don't know what you're dealing with. They don't have categories for it. They don't have diagnoses for it. Unless you are able to go to a physician who's certified in environmental medicine. And there are such, there is such a specialty, environmental medicine. And with someone like that, you might, you might have a little bit of success. Another possibility is the question of a case definition of some, for someone with chemical injury. You know, the case definition for, for COVID is infection with such and such an organism and, and certain symptoms and so on. We don't have a, we just have the beginnings of a case definition for chemical injury. And it's a simple one. And it's a, it's a little test that you can take online. You can get it online. It's called the Q E S I. And it stands for the Quick Environmental Exposure and Sensitivity Inventory. You take, you, it's all self-report stuff. You, you can take it. Takes, you know, 15 minutes to fill it out. And then you have, and it's, it's a, considered a valid and reliable test. It's got a high sensitivity rate. It is, it picks up most cases and a high specificity rate. It doesn't pick up cases that aren't actually chemical injuries. So, that's, that's a possible approach to, to just have that in your back pocket, the results of that Q E S I test when, when you speak with physicians again.
So, effectively, the GP could actually run that test every time they...
You do it yourself. I wouldn't, I wouldn't rely on them. You, you do it yourself. You download it. It's a, it's a little PDF and you print it and check off the boxes, the questions that it asks you. It's all very simple and straightforward. And you get the results yourself and you take them to your physician.
Yes.
GPs, who knows if GPs will be able to take it seriously, but toxicologists won't take it seriously. Allergists won't take it seriously, but environmental medicine physicians will.
However, under the New Zealand Health Act, and I think this is still in force, GPs are required by law to report cases of chemical poisoning. Now, and we need to check that that's still the case, but it used to be the case. I don't think any, very few GPs even know that. But if you wave that test in front of them and wave in front of them their requirement to report it, we might start to make a little bit of progress, possibly. But I understand also that GPs tend to be terribly conservative in their approach towards chemical poisoning. And there was a certain, there's a huge amount of enlightenment is needed in the, in the medical fraternity, just including to the law that they're bound by. But it's worth, you know, do it. I mean, might be a good idea to do it. Tom suggests, check out that law, go back to the doctor and say, chemical poisoning, please report.
Yep. I, I've had a series of doctors and it's only recently that we've had a change of thinking. So, there's hope for new people who have been chemically poisoned. But I would suggest that genome testing is a very accurate way to understand whether you're susceptible before you go into that workplace environment.
I just put a link to that Q E S I test in the chat, just for people's information.
Thank you.
One other thing, Shane, you know, if they can't find biomarkers like, like genetic, the result of a genetic test, they can't find biomarkers, that doesn't mean there's not a, you don't have a problem. It just means they don't, they haven't identified a biomarker for that particular condition. So...
That's interesting. The genome test actually identified that I was very slow for metabolism in that field. And the research confirmed that organic solvents in a person with that trait, it becomes toxic. So, I actually have the evidence, but I haven't got a medical profession to promote that for me.
Shane, would you be able to submit what you've just said? I, I think you had it in writing. It would be very useful if you could submit that in writing to the People's Inquiry. It would help us with our report.
Yes, that's fine. I've seen my notes that I just read as well.
I'm conscious that we need to keep to the schedule because we've got three more speakers lined up. And so we've got probably one more minute, if there's any final questions, before we have a short break for five minutes.
Yes, I had a question and to thank you again, Shane, for your, your testimony. And I'm quite shocked again because I can see that it's had a huge impact on you. And I'm very sorry to hear that. And I wondered if you could briefly share with us how that's impacted your day-to-day life? You know, your domestic situation, your, you know, your sleeping patterns, your, you know, relationships, something like that, if that's okay.
I would just explain that initially, it's very incapacitating. Financially, it's crippling. The only reason that we survive is that the work I'd done previously meant we were debt-free. Otherwise, we would have been, had our house sold, everything sold up on us. How it affects me today, still after all these years, is I've got rolling fatigue. I can't take up 40-hour week because I wouldn't be able to provide justice to the employee. So, I'm still stuck trying to generate funds on my own behalf as a self-employed person. Most of my work at present is non-funded. So, it's quite crippling not to have that state support. And as you will realise... And as you um will realize, that businesses under COVID are being supported very well. Um, and we've gone uh probably, what is it, since two thousand and six? Quite a few years with no uh help or support, yeah.
Thank you so much, Kya.
Thank you.
Okay.
So thank you very much again, Shane, for sharing that. And um we really appreciate the time and, and your submissions. And so we're just gonna take a few minutes break, just literally four minutes uh before we hear our next speaker, who's Nora Shaya. Uh, speaking from Northland about forestry herbicides and pesticides. And I know you're there in the background, Nora, so we'll look forward to hearing from you in a few minutes. Okay, if you're there, Nora, if you want to just uh switch on your your microphone and your video so we can see you and make sure you're all okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'll start the video, yeah.
That's brilliant, we can see you nice and clearly, welcome to the People's Inquiry.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to have you um speaking with us, we, we haven't met before, have we?
No, no, I have, oh, I've seen you on the websites, but uh, yeah, our, we don't have a website yet, so I'm, yeah.
That's great, and it's great to see you and hear, hear you clearly. So you're going to talk to us today about forestry pesticides and herbicides, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, I'm going to read this off, so I can't see you, but I guess you can see me and.
Okay, so what I'll do, like we did before, I'll just, I'll switch, I'll switch my video off now. And I'll just switch the video back on and give you a, a little wave when we're getting near to the end of where you need to stop. And then we'll turn to the commissioners in case they want to ask you some questions.
Yeah, okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you want to go, go ahead and introduce yourself and.
Yeah, thank you, Kya, everyone, my name is Nora Shaya. I immigrated from Germany to New Zealand over thirty years ago. Since two thousand and five, I am at home in a magnificent bush reserve above the Tudakaka coast. I identify myself as a nature's rights activist. In two thousand and nine, I started to experience constant headaches, blistering inflammation of the mucous membranes of the nose, throat and lungs, irritated red and burning eyes, chronic fatigue, dizziness, nausea, depression, muscle and joint pains and my lymph nodes were constantly swollen and painful. I repeatedly went to my G P who ran various blood tests and allergy tests. And I had my teeth and ears checked to find the source of my headaches and other ailments with no results. According to the doctors, I was perfectly healthy. Finally, I had a hair analysis done by an alternative health practitioner, which indicated that I was poisoned with Tordon. This is a herbicide commonly used by forestry operations. It was pointed out to me that this pesticide could have been in my body since birth, but the likelihood of either of my parents having been exposed to picoram is minimal. I made inquiries about the use of pesticides in our region with the Fugari District Council, the District Health Board and the forestry operators themselves, but I didn't get very far. However, I found a retired forestry manager who was prepared to talk. He explained to me that in the past, they never sprayed pesticides and that really wasn't necessary at all. They now spray because of the pressure from the chemical companies. I learned that New Zealand buys chemicals that are banned in other parts of the world. I also spoke to an environmental chemistry lab and started to research online about the negative impacts of pesticides on the environment, wildlife and humans, and I was horrified. I learned about the dangers, the damage and the corruption behind pesticide spraying. And that my adopted home, our Tiara, is by no means clean green. The only reason why the pastures are so green is because they have tons of artificial fertilizers stamped on them. And that until some time ago, we were lucky to get enough rain, but that has changed with the climate crisis. The pine plantation less than kilo- two kilometers away from my bush reserve was logged on fourteen years ago. Afterwards, the forestry company headed aerial spray for weeds by helicopter. I tried to warn the Nauru Primary School, which is situated less than one kilometer downwind from that forest. I tried to raise awareness in our community, talking to many people in person, distributing three hundred flyers to their mailboxes and wrote an article in the newspaper. For this, I was attacked by the public for offending the forestry because they provide a handful of people with occasional work. Note that the lease of this publicly owned, owned land, we planted again in pine, was given to an American company rather than a New Zealand company. So New Zealand isn't even making a big profit. Not that profit should matter when the health of the environment and humans are at risk. In two thousand and ten, I met some of the local women who many years ago had been part of the toxin awareness group tag. They had publicly protested against pesticide spraying at the Fugari District Council, expressing their concern for the health of their children. Nothing had changed in the group, eventually fell apart. In two thousand and eleven, outraged about this total lack of responsibility by our government institutions towards the people and the environment, I decided to revive Tag into the Northland Toxin Awareness Group and Tag. I currently coordinate our efforts to educate the public about the adverse effects of pesticides on the environment and all life forms and lobby our councils to stop aerial and roadside spraying. Meantime, I had read the book, uh, Dr. Mario Watson's book, The Poisoning of New Zealand, and consequently invited Muriel in July two thousand and seventeen to give a presentation on the adverse effects of pesticides in Fugari, which was attended by over one hundred people. In March two thousand and eighteen, we invited Jack Crow, ex-biocurity officer of Auckland, now N R C councillor, to give a presentation of his method of least disturbance and what he calls weed replacement therapy. Jack has many years of experience in biosecurity and a degree in chemistry. Although he is not strictly against pesticides, he is a strong advocate in a minimal and safe use of selected pesticides. I am not advocating the use of any toxic pesticides. But I reason that Jack's approach might be a good start to inspire people to minimize the use of toxic pesticides and make the first steps in the right direction to get off the addiction to pesticides. Regarding my own health, in two thousand and ten, I had heard about the Environmental Health Clinic on the North Shore. And I went for a consultation with Dr. Matthew Tsat, who used homeopathic medicine and hyperbaric oxygen to treat chemical poisoning. I underwent his detox program, traveling down to the North Shore over a few months. I'm glad I had the financial means at the time to pay for this treatment and the travels. Eventually, my health improved, but I react strongly to the slightest whiff of pesticides, like when council does their roadside spraying. I've only recently read Rachel Carson's Silent Spring. And I often had to put the book aside because the description of dying wildlife evokes such painful emotions that I break into tears. I've also just reread Dr. Watson's book, The Poisoning of New Zealand, which was a reminder and helped me understand better my own reoccurring health issues. In the last few months, the very same symptoms I experienced before have returned. Only now I'm feeling much worse than in two thousand and nine. It comes at no surprise because the aerial spraying in our area has intensified. Large tracts of farmland and clear-felt forestry are now turned into big residential subdivisions. Council, in their infinite wisdom, is making weed control a condition for subdivision and stipulating that pampas and bors has to be sprayed. And of course, there's the ongoing dousing of our road sites with herbicides, whether there's something growing there or not. I'm often extremely fatigued. It takes a gargantuan effort just to think and do the most basic things and I'm often severely depressed. This symptom was explained in Mario's book and I had forgotten about it. I never in my life had mental health issues and never knew what people would, with real depression experience. Sure, I have times when I'm frustrated and I'm happy like everyone else, but I didn't know what depression is. When I'm depressed, I don't recognize myself and I think this is not me. But now I'm clear that this is chemically induced. Like it says in your book, Mario, this is a very important factor that the medical industry and people who work in mental health should know. Some month ago, I read an article on the high suicide rate in builders. I myself had worked in construction for many years and was very surprised to hear that. And then it dawned on me that chippies are constantly exposed to wood preservatives and insecticides. I wrote to this organization called Mates in Construction and pointed this out to them, proposing that they should conduct annual checks of all builders on pesticide levels in their bodies. But they didn't seem very interested. In April, May this year, the long-term plans of all our northern councils came up for public consultation. I spent weeks researching and reading documents, writing submissions, rallying people, going to council meetings and public consultations, and I spoke at two hearings. Seventy-five people in our area supported our submission for an immediate moratorium on all aerial and roadside spraying. I also submitted to the Climate Change Commission and the R M A review. I feel burned out at the moment and deeply frustrated. Nowhere in any of the new plans is there an indication of regulations to minimize pesticide use, not that I know of anyway. The only thing that keeps me going at the moment is my love and responsibility for my bush reserve and all her beings and my anger. I am angry about all these helpless birds crashing into windows because their navigation system is impaired by neurotoxins. I'm angry about all the unborn or defected little birds never getting a chance to sing their songs because their mother can't lay healthy eggs anymore. I'm angry about all the aquatic life getting poisoned by the continuous spraying of toxins which end up in our waterways. I'm angry about our soils and food being poisoned. I am angry about clean green New Zealand, having one of the highest breast cancer rates in the world. I'm angry about thousands of women dying of horrible and totally preventable death. And I'm very angry that in spite of all the incriminating scientific evidence about the harm of toxic pesticides such as glyphosate, ten eighty, and many other highly hazardous pesticides, our government is still trying to pull us. What kind of government would knowingly sell its own people, its own children, food containing a much higher level of toxic pesticides than the maximum residual levels of our export products? They cannot claim ignorance because the fact that other countries have rejected some of our products, like Japan recently rejected New Zealand honey, which contained traces of glyphosate. That should give them enough reason to reassess our regulations. This to me is genocide. New Zealand government is not only guilty of eco-side with their outrageous use of ten eighty in the name of a predator-free New Zealand, which is just another very successful P R campaign that had nothing to do with reality, but our government is also guilty of genocide. And I said so at the council hearings. I'm very angry about this blatant corruption. But anger is a good thing, it's an important step to healing. Anger inspires us to move forward. Anger is a creative force, my anger keeps me going. I want justice for nature, I want justice for planet Earth, I want justice for all of us. What is happening in New Zealand is not just, it is irresponsible, it is immoral. It is total corruption and it is criminal. And we must break free of this tyranny of this chemical mafia, we simply must. Yeah, that's me. Nora, thank you so much for your passion uh and for your words of wisdom. And actually, it's lovely to see you again. Um, I, I'm so sorry that you continue to suffer from these chemicals and what they're doing to you and everyone else. And I'm humbled by your passion um and all the work that you are doing for Northland to try to, try to bring some, some sanity to the world. Uh, in all my years of working with pesticides, Northland is a region that time and time and time again has the worst problems with spray drift, with chemical contamination, either through aerial spraying largely, but you know, and increasingly through the, the um, the horticultural sprays. But uh, it, it doesn't help you to know that, but it's just something that we need to be aware that Northland has the lowest socioeconomic region in the country, has the most problem with um poverty. And it has the biggest problem with chemical poisoning. I wonder if there's any kind of relationship between the two. Thank you for bringing up the mental health issue. Um, it tends to get forgotten, not many people talk about it, but I'm, I'm reminded when I, years and years ago, when I worked for Greenpeace, I think it was at the time, and I had someone from um, from Pukiko'i. At that point, at that time, somebody, a farmer at Pukiko'i had come home and shot all his family, five people killed them after he'd been out working on the farm. Um, I, and I had somebody else from Pukiko'i and tell me, come and tell me that whenever the, whenever the men in the family had been out spraying pesticides, they would come home and beat up their wives. Um, and other people around the country have told me the same thing, the, the, the connection between spraying pesticides and domestic violence is still unrecognized in this country and, and not everywhere in the world, but it's here. And the connection between spraying pesticides and mental health is still unrecognized. So thank you very much for bringing it up for us all to, to hear. And it was certainly something that we'll make sure goes on the report, thank you. Well, thank you, thank you for all your work and your book has changed my life. And I think you're our very own Rachel Carson, it's, yeah, your dedication is just amazing, thank you, Mario. Thank you for that, Nora, you know, I still have the same frustration that you do, that, and actually in thirty years, not a lot has changed. Yeah, and that's a very sad thing, when I read your book again sixteen years later, in conjunction with Rachel Carson's book, it made me realize that since Rachel wrote her book and you wrote yours, the whole situation has just so intensified and become so utterly critical. We must all be loaded, we, and, and every creature out there loaded with pesticides. So it doesn't take much, which is what, what I brought up in, in the council hearings as well, is we are supposedly, you know, we supposed to isolate ourselves from each other. But COVID, I mean, uh, the way we are exposed to pesticides, our lungs get irritated and, and COVID attacks the lungs. And I pointed this out to them, if we, if we need to stay healthy and strong, which most of us am anyway, then you need to stop aerial spraying. And they sprayed just a few weeks ago for two days, four days in strong wind, curved five hundred meters away from the Nauru Primary School. It just blows me away that it is possible to do that. And when I ring the district health board and the council and the N R C, they are, it's, yeah, it's the usual thing. If they first deny it's happening and then they say, oh, yeah, but you know, that's all safe. I said, well, it isn't just because you say so, doesn't make it so. It's always, always the same in sixteen years of this work. That's the kind of reaction we get from the government agencies that are supposedly protecting us and I had enough. Yeah, thank you.
Well, I would like to uh, thank you too and echo everything Mariel just said. And because I was, I was really impressed with your testimony when I read it through. I loved the capital letters, I loved the anger, I loved the love. I mean, the passion, the passion, the things that move people are love for something and some, and anger at the violation of that. And so you're. And so your moral order just came rushing through your testimony and I really appreciated that a lot. One question that I have is, you know, we're as commissioners, we're going to write something. What? What would you ask of us? What would you hope to hear from us? What?
What I would like to see happening is that we really all together, this whole country, all the people who have been working on this for so long. Publicly expose what is what our government is doing. I mean, to start with, I would like to have the EPA rename the environmental polluting agency. Please and dock the department of constipation because they're full of poo. And yeah, to start with, but to me really. I'm working on exposing what's happening in New Zealand overseas, New Zealand. It's always like that. Let's put it that way. I mean, is so many countries who are doing the same thing, nearly everyone around the world. But nobody like New Zealand is making this big claim of being clean green. Well, hey guys, you know, you gotta live up to it. You can't just say it and just by denying what's happening. You know, it's not gonna go away. So if, and I'm doing this because I love this country. I'm not doing this to do any harm to it and I want the opposite. And I believe that with five million people, we should be able to do it. We don't have 80 million people to convince like Germany. We're only five million people. Surely we must be able to do this. And what I would like to see happening is just that we speak the truth. And no compromise, absolutely no more compromise. What's happening too is and that is something that people totally forget is pesticides have a big impact on the climate itself. So you know, they're talking about climate crisis and all our councils have, you know, declared climate emergency. And then they go and spray pesticides that are directly affecting the climate adversely affected the climate. So we just have to be a loud voice now. It's not enough to educate the public. By the time we've educated the entire public, we're all dead. It's gonna be too late. But as who know more now, we do have a responsibility. With knowledge, one has a responsibility and ours is to. Expose what's happening and if necessary, shame New Zealand overseas. And tell them what they're doing to their own people. And that we are not clean and green.
Thank you.
I'm happy to ask a question. I'm curious. So you might have heard from me saying this before. So my expertise is not necessarily the chemicals, but in the regulation side of things. So I'm curious, the like Tordon, that's got the agent orange, is it peak chlorine element in it? And supposedly, I know there are the official advice, I think it's a Dow, what can I, what can Stowe, whatever puts this out and says. It's top, it's carcinogenicity for humans is very low. Right? So they focus on carcinogenicity, but it's extremely toxic to wildlife and water. And so I'm, and I understand it was first used to paint stumps and things like that. And now they're taken to spraying it. So I'm just really surprised, one, that they're spraying an agent orange type thing, which is extremely toxic to water over large areas, which is going to be in a water catchment. I don't know, but so, but you said that this is quite common. You say they are using this for spraying in Northland for general weed control in the forest. Is that right?
The latest spraying just a few weeks ago was within a herbicide called Crest. And that's, it's also says it's highly toxic to aquatic life. It was sprayed within maximum 200 meters of the Nauru river. There's waterways directly in the property where they sprayed. They, Crest is banned in Brazil as Mario established. Why Brazil? It's still a mystery to me, but it's apparently on recall in Germany now. But you know, you just need to read the data sheet. I find it quite insulting to call it data sheet, but anyway. And you need to read the data sheet and it's this, so clearly it's highly toxic to aquatic life. And you spray it in an area where there's an history. Never mind that yes, I don't know 200 kids, right? You know, down around the road, but yeah, they, it's. I, I mean, our EPA, I don't know why we have it really, but. They don't, well, they claim there is no scientific data because they haven't done the scientific research. And what I keep saying, and I said that to counsel, we don't need to do our scientific research. The World Health Organization, United Nations, there's, the research has been done. It has been declared, many of these substances have been declared highly hazardous. And that should be good enough for New Zealand. We are humans like everybody else. We are mammals like everybody else. Our bodies react exactly the same like the Americans and like the English and like the Germans. What's the difference? Why do we need to have our own scientific data? And then of course they find the excuse and say, we don't have the funds for that scientific research. We're just look at the internet. I did it. You can do it. You know, that's, it's very simple.
That's actually a really good comment. I think you hit the nail on the head there. I have wondered that myself. One, we don't have enough money supposedly to do everything we want to do. I mean, we never do for everything, right? So why don't we use what other people have got where it makes sense? And the EU information, the EU puts huge amounts into, you know, research and data and regulation, especially in environmental matters. So we could just say, okay, we're going to default adopt the EU position. Unless someone can prove that we should do something different in New Zealand, you know what I mean? But the only, we have, it's just, it's a cultural approach that. One of the major, in fact, the most common reason being to justify. The use of a particular pesticide and its categorization under the EPA is actually simply the uses for which we want to be put. It's the economic benefits, the economic social stuff, and it's not the health. And, and they prove numbers, they can prove how much it would cost to do things differently and you can't prove something else. So we don't have the same default position that we do, that they do overseas. And we don't, and we're not putting the money into either the investigation in advance or the monitoring of defects. I mean, there's all sorts of monitoring we don't do.
There was part of my submission to the council, Northern Regional Council, as I said, and I said that actually in the MRI review as well. Don't waste more tax dollars on rewriting the rules that you're not sticking to anyway. How about you spend it on monitoring and enforcement? Because they always say we have no money for monitoring and enforcement. Just two days ago, I again ring regional council about another issue. Where we have to rely on the public and when then the public calls in and says, hey, there's somebody spraying and they're spraying a 20 knots of wind. Then they say, oh, well, we can't come out. Yeah, we have to just believe what the pilot's saying. Well, so what is it? Are you trusting that the public to monitor or not? Yeah, and the waste of money on this, for example, predator free campaign, which is just another campaign to sell us. Pesticides 1080 and God knows what. It's the same thing. And, and that, yeah, there's conservationists, people who have worked in biosecurity all their lives. You say, we actually don't have a big problem with possums. Possums are not the big issue, the destruction, destruction of habitat is the big issue. And guess who's doing that? Us, you know, it's the how, I'm blown away how New Zealand could be taken over by this. Well, what I call the chemical mafia. Because that's in the, in the end, that's what's happening is they're using us to sell us products that they would. In other parts of the world have to dispose of somehow responsibly, yeah, responsibly. Would cost them a fortune to do so. So let's send it to the New Zealanders.
Can I, can I just add a little something to that? You're quite right. And part of the problem we have in New Zealand is an institutional mindset dating right back to 1940s. New Zealand invented aerial spraying. Unfortunately for us, New Zealand invented aerial spraying and we are so proud of it because we were world leaders. And we've never wanted to let go of it. We've never wanted to acknowledge as an institutional memory is so strong within our government in New Zealand about. How wonderful aerial spraying is all that 245T to get rid of the gorse and the monica, you know, the scrub that nobody wanted. Which is, you know, a very valued biodiversity. But so that unfortunate bit of history for us has left a lasting legacy in the brains of this country. That chemical spraying is a good thing and especially aerial spraying. I can answer, I can answer one thing about a couple of questions, things that points I'd like to make. The EPA is about to, well, the government, the government is about to pass an amendment to the legislation governing the EPA. Allowing it to use chemical pesticide assessments from overseas. And that includes the European Union. Unfortunately, it also includes Australia and the USA who are bad. In comparison with the EU, but, but, but so up until this point, they haven't even legally been allowed to do that. So, you know, at least they're making some very, very tiny progress. It's one of the things you mentioned Brazil and that Brazil has banned halocyphol. And that is because Brazil, like the European Union, has legislation what says. If this chemical causes these problems or has these hazards, we're not allowed to be used. And that's anything to do with reproductive toxicity, endocrine disruption, cancer. Brazil and the European Union are the only countries in the world that have that legislation. As, as Catherine pointed out, we, and our legislation says, well, farmers can make a profit out of it. That's okay to use it. And that's our problem.
Farmers unfortunately are glorified in this country. You know, they make it sound like when Greta Thunberg just recently attacked New Zealand for not. Living up to, to the climate crisis. I read that just in there and said, well, we are food producing country. And I thought, you know, you're not doing this for altruistic reasons. You're doing it for money. And growing for export means you are exploiting your own country. I mean, we don't even get the quality products anymore. They are sold for export. So it's, you're growing more than your own people need. Means you're exploiting, you're raping and pillaging your own country. And therefore, you know, it's not an excuse. It's, yeah, people always use that as well. We need to earn a living. We need to feed our family. For thousands of years, humans have used this excuse to rape and pillage planet earth, to poison it to. And, and I mean, what is a financial benefit to one? You know, to certain people when the rest of us are paying the bills, the doctors' bills, that, you know, not being able to work. Now, there is no profit.
Nora, I'm gonna have to stop you there. I'm sorry. We need to keep the schedule, but. Hopefully we'll have an opportunity later in this event to pick up on some, because they're recurring themes. And, and things that other speakers I know, myself included, will build upon what you've said. And expand upon those. So thank you ever so much for your fantastic testimony. I know it's really impacted all of us. So really thank you very much for, for your hard work and for coming to share your story with us.
We're all in this together.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so we've got two more speakers lined up for this afternoon and we're just gonna take a few minutes break now. And then we'll come back to speak to Nadine Conoch from South Island. So we just need to gather our thoughts and write some notes up and respond to some questions. And we'll be back to you in a few minutes' time. Thank you, everybody. Welcome back, everybody. It's been an interesting day so far, hasn't it? It's a very emotional testimonies. And so we've got two more speakers lined up, Nadine and Hannah. And I want to first just acknowledge, because I know that we've had various silent observers in the background. Listening and sending in very supportive messages into the chat and from very, on various platforms. We've, we've had various messages. So thank you, everybody, for your patience and for listening. And for your kind support in whatever way you have been supporting us. So, so yeah, that's very much appreciated by all of us, the committee and the commissioners. We couldn't do this without you. So I'd like now to call on Nadine Conoch. Who is from South Island. And she's going to talk to us about forestry herbicides, which is a thing that we were just talking about, including glyphosate. And so Nadine, if you're there, if you'd like to just put your video and microphone on. And briefly introduce yourself and then I'll give you a wave. When we're coming towards the end of our time. Together. So that the commissioners can ask you some questions. I can hear you, I think. Oh, no. She's got her mute on. If you turn your microphone on and your video, we should be able to see you. That's on. There you go. We can see you. Welcome.
Hi, sorry about that. I've got a very slow connection down in South Island today.
It's great to see you.
You too. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be part of this today. My name is Nadine Conach, as you can see. I will just give you a little bit of background about my position. Obviously, I do not have 30 years' experience of being involved in this issue. Can you hear me okay? Is it loud enough? So I was actually living in Egypt, working through the American University of Cairo as a political scientist. Looking at sustainable development initiatives with the university, trying to grow. Food on rooftop gardens because of the toxicity of the soil there from chemical poisoning. And they were using aquaponics as a way to try and gain some sort of fertility for food growing. I also was involved with a professor who was fighting a case. Writing a case up for the International Criminal Court. Around aerial spraying of glyphosate on the Gaza border by Israel. And so that was a herbicidal warfare campaign. And that was one of my first major understandings of the problem of glyphosate. But on a much wider scale than we're talking about here today. So I, the reason that they were going down the track of international criminal court. Was the upcoming possibility of the ability to have ecocide as a criminal offense. They couldn't attack the argument legally with genocide because there was just too much provision from the Israeli defense side. That they were just acting in self-defense. So ecocide was studied over 10 years, samples taken from plants, from the structure of the soil. To actually look at the damage, the DNA damage and how long it was going to take to recover from that intensive aerial spraying campaign. Not really much different to the Vietnam War campaign of deforestation and defoliage there to, to see enemy visibility. So that paperwork went to a special committee at the UN. And as a result of that, they actually ruled on the consequences of spray drift. And aerial spraying was stopped by Israel. I don't know how long, whether they resumed that spraying, but there's starting to be some sort of commentary coming out now on infertility in women on the Gaza Strip. So we're hoping to maybe try to make some sort of link there eventually too. So I ended up coming back home to New Zealand under unexpected circumstances. And segwayed into this issue from living in a rural community in New Zealand. And having a litter box dropped by a forestry company that they were going to be spraying aeroly. The weed knockdown management and I decided to do some digging on what they were spraying. And four weeks of research dropped me into the biggest rabbit hole I could possibly imagine. So it didn't take me 30 years or, you know, very long to make the connections on what's going on here. Um so it didn't take me thirty years or, you know, very long to make the connections on what's going on here. And I think, I mean, there's so much in my submission, I'm not gonna be able to cover it all right now. But what what I really want to talk about actually is what I feel. Um it's full regulatory capture in this country by foreign interests and how. The public are just not aware of what level of degree um this is impacting our political institutions and the stranglehold. Over things like drinking water safety standards, health safety standards, labelling standards. And that we should actually have a full independent reform into national standards. Um and I think we need to also argue that M-Fat needs to be completely split up. We need to have some standalone division that looks at the UN Declaration of Rights of Indigenous Peoples. And that stands and sets apart as a political department from M-Fat and MPI, which right now seem to be. Just at the helm of all of these decisions around safety, workplace safety, mental health safety. Everything just keeps coming back to the fact that export and international obligations take priority in this country. Um over public and environmental health. So I've posted a link that I think people should be really familiar with. Which is an amazing um investigation by Sharon Luna from the Interset. About how pesticide companies poisoned the EPA in America. So as far as I can see, New Zealand's way more leaning towards a US-based agrochemical industry EPA than an EU, which is what we talked about earlier. So um the regulatory capture that this country is under seems to be hiding. Um things like the fact that we are importing thirty million dollars annually of blood phosphate out of the Western Sahara. Illegally violating peace treaties, international law and forcibly um displacing indigenous Sahrawi tribe. Into Algerian refugee camps, yet our political government is not even saying that this is a problem. You've got the likes of the CEOs from Ravensdown and Agribalance saying it's an issue for the UN. They're just doing business as usual. So I can't see how we can be getting away with being, New Zealand being the last major purchaser of these strategic minerals. And when you look at strategic minerals and how they're being mined and what they're being used for in things like fertilizer and 1080. There's a huge argument there around, you know, on every level, whether it's environmental, public harm, but also political harm. And war crimes, just like our position when we manufactured the herbicidal compounds that were being put together for Asian origin of Vietnam War. And all that paperwork got suppressed in the parliament. Um so I think. You know, coming from, I've lived in London, I've lived in Vietnam, I lived in Egypt. I think one of the things that. New Zealand suffers from a little is the isolation that we have here as a community intellectually and academically on what is going on in the rest of the world. And how we are actually part of um some of these really big processes. And that it's time, you know, it's time for us to actually stand on our own two feet. Or if we're talking about self-determination, then why is it that we are still being, you know, advised by agrochemical industries? For our science, for our research, for our data, the environmental defence, um the EDS, that company, their funding. Who's funding them? Read between the lines there. Why are they not mentioning anything about pesticides? Here's your answer. Doesn't take too long to look down the bottom of a paper and see who's funding and publishing these papers. Um it's one oh one critical observative thinking. We were all taught and told. You know, in university, what's the first thing you do when you check a research report? You check who's funding it, you know? Whose research does it belong to? Whose interest does it serve? Um so I think we need some reminders of that, particularly with the way our journalism in this country is heading as well. There's not a lot of investigative journalism happening here. There's a lot of opinion pieces. Um but with not a lot of, you know, backup evidence. So. Things like Corteva Agroscience, what are they still doing in our country? How are they possibly still here doing the the things that they are doing? And why are we not asking these questions? They've they've polluted us, they've contaminated us. We've seen that with the veterans with new Plymouth dioxin. They've just renamed themselves and said it used to be Ivan Watkins Dow. Now it was Corteva Agroscience. Um. And they're able to just keep pushing the narrative and spinning that everything's safe and everything's okay. Um don't worry, just go back to the handbook of regulations and safety standards that we've actually set, by the way. And if you look at around two thousand and sixteen, what happened in New Zealand around all the reclassifications of chemicals. And hazardous standards and things like that. And then you track along how much quantities and production of chemicals were used since then. It's pretty obvious to me what's happening. Three point five trillion dollar annual industry in agrochemicals alone. They don't want this stuff being stopped. So I think that's pretty much covered everything I wanted to say. Just quickly, I did want to also talk about. Um what's happening in New Zealand with forestry audits? Because there's a lot of corruption there. If you make a submission and a complaint and that results in a corrective action. You are then struck off the register or the consultation um submission process the following year and you don't get to to partake. And they're able to choose and sample what consultation or what submitters are then put into the audit. And the list that they get for the the participation comes from the forestry companies. So I'm trying to follow that up at the moment with Forestry Stewardship Council, but not getting very far. And that's because that's also regulatory capture there as well. So thanks.
Thank you very much for that. Nadine, that's really interesting and a subject that I don't know personally much about. So uh. I'd like to hand over to the commissioners for, I'm sure there'll be quite a few questions for you.
Yeah, Nadine, I just want to say, I was fascinated to hear about your experiences with Israel and Gaza. I had the privilege of going to um the West Bank on United, on a human rights. Um uh expedition, you could call it, basically to report on human rights to the US. Uh it's not the US, the UN, um relating to Israel and pesticide issues. And so. Um I have an understanding from from the West Bank. I was aware of what was happening in Gaza, but. Um thank you for doing that work because it's so very important. You know, and you get it as far as the UN and it goes round and round and round of committees and then it bounces back off Israel and nothing much changes. Unfortunately, yes, there is still spraying happening on the Gaza border. Nice that Israel stopped it for a little while. Um but uh thank you very much for that. And thank you very much for bringing out to the fore the problem with regulatory capture in this country. We read a lot about it in the US. We don't read about it in New Zealand because nobody, as you point out, we don't have much in the way of. Investigative journalists to write about these things. Um you know, we have, we have a couple of good investigative journalists. We haven't been able to get them onto this track yet, but uh it's a, it's a good reminder that we actually really need. To get deeper into the um corporate capture problem we have in this country. I'll pass over to other commissioners if they have any comments or questions.
Emma, do you want to quickly ask a question? Because I know you've got to dash off for a moment.
Just want to thank you so much for your presentation and your, it's in particular, I like the um. What you brought up about um the, you know, full regulatory capture. Because I hadn't actually thought about that before, but you're absolutely right about um what's going on there. But also the importing of um the amount of um phosphate that's important imported into this country and. Um that the fact that indigenous peoples again suffer from 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 this kind of practice. And um what I wonder about is that, you know, how to to look at that attitude around. Um around. That how how can I say this without sounding rude, but um. The the gender equality, I guess, is probably the best way of saying that. And, you know, that attitude around, um it's no problem to to destroy. Or to to harm um women and and the land. And so um I think you brought that up um much more clear for me in my mind anyway. And I just, I don't really have a question at this time, but um I just want to say thank you for um your time and and your expertise and your experience that you've brought here. So I tell you, it's it's.
Yes, um thanks again. Um and I uh I really appreciate the bringing together the various different elements. Um like, just for example, one thing, so I teach resource management law, you know, is one thing I do. And so you're bringing up that interaction between SNA protection and wondering why that, you know, is allowed to effectively be nullified. Um I I must admit, I'm not entirely sure of some of the details because of course you've got a short submission. So I am interested in. In just asking, just for a bit of clarification, the SNA on the, it says a boundary neighbor of a proposed spraying site. You know, from your submission. Um and uh and you talk about. Um boundary infringement activity in a helicopter landing site and things like that. I presume. Those landing sites are on the forestry land, but it happens to be on the boundary of the SNA. Um but you're, and it's the cross-boundary protection that's failing. Am I right there? Um and is it also spray drift or are you onto boundary land? Or are you more worried about the effects of the pesticide on the sprayed land, but then washing down like waterways? And then all the birds that are also, you know, birds don't know where the property boundary line is, right? Like you talk about the carere. You know, they don't know um which side of the fence is sprayed and which is not. Um so I'm, so I'd be fascinated in in you elaborating a little bit more on um some of that detail. So uh in case I've got a RMA type, you know, analysis or recommendation.
Yes, so um the Teal Valley is um northern Nelson and it's a very unique position in that. Um a lot of forestry in New Zealand is is quite far away from urban living quarters. You know, it's it's off main roads and 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 away um in towards more mountainous areas. But the Teal Valley is very unique in that it's literally um a block of forestry that is at the end of a road. Where there's a residential area. So the person that is at that particular SNA designated site. Sees the mast and the helicopter from every window in her property. It is that close. So people that have been living in this area, um you know, they have been dealing with the forestry company operating. From ten o'clock at night until four in the morning. And when they're in the logging and harvesting phase, that. Um uh horn, the safety horn, goes every ten minutes. But because it is a short, sharp blast, it doesn't come under any noise control issue because of the decibel level. Um and so there's no public pollution or noise pollution, anything like that. So you've got a very unique situation where the boundaries and the areas are very, very close. You know, we're talking hundreds meters, fifty meters. So it's not a couple of K away. And there's a stream that runs right through the valley where all the residents are taking domestic water abstractions. There is a tributary that runs into a major ecosystem in the area that's under EWE um biodiversity rights. And um because the forestry company is not managed by council, it's privately owned by a Japanese corporation called Sumitomo. It doesn't fall under the same protections of the RMA or the district plan or the air quality plan because it's private, privately managed. So they've given the company an ability to operate under permitted activity status and not resource consent. Right. So there's no monitoring or compliance or checking of anything that they're doing. Because they're just saying that they're acting in good faith and they know the standards that they're supposed to be operating under. So the helicopter skid site patch is so close to the fledglands that. Anytime that they land, it's just, you know, disruption, whether it's wind or dust or just the effect of the helicopter itself. The spraying is is also part of this problem. Um because we have actually been trying to negotiate with them to not spray five meters. Close to the water catchments and the drinking supplies. The Nelson City Council in their own forestry managed areas that have water, just um public drinking water supplies that supplies the residents. They've actually banned aerial spraying of weed management programs and they use back net, net sack knockdown spraying processes only. And they do three to hun- three hundred to five hundred meter setbacks to the boundaries. But the forestry companies, five meters. And they are saying that they are totally confident with their spray operation plans. That there won't be any discharge indirectly or directly to the waterways. And when we requested that they do some water sampling, they took their own water samples. The forestry company took their own samples and got it tested and then gave us the results.
That's quite common, I must admit. Most councils put all the burden on the quarry to monitor its own sediment and its heavy metals. And they just.
And they could collect, they could collect their own samples. It wasn't environment coming to collect the water samples. The forestry collected samples from strategic places of the streams and then handed them in. So, yeah.
Um so so if this, that, um the controls like on aerial spraying and setbacks for, you know, water. Catchment uh reasons, that is actually, especially the water ones, that's a matter of like a regional plan or a local city plan. It's probably, I'm guessing Tasman District reason, regional.
Nelson, Nelson, Nelson City Council.
Nelson City, but there's usually, but Nelson City doesn't have water controls. That's the regional plan. Nelson doesn't have any responsibility.
It's a regional, it's a regional unit.
Oh, is it a unitary? Okay, sorry. I didn't, I'm not familiar down there. Okay, Unitary Authority, right. All right. That's different. Um so uh they, if they wanted to, this is a political issue, they could put those same kind of aerial spray bans. Uh setback rules, they could put them in the plans. Um and any citizen, uh any rate payer can submit and. So just that goes in the next plan, you know, or an amendment.
I have now been, I've been now been told by Nelson City Council that um. They can no longer answer any of my questions because they are, um their resources are too thin on the ground. And it would take away business as usual from other people and that any further correspondence with me will um incur fees and charges. Up to seven thousand dollars sometimes.
You you don't have to write about it. You just propose a plan change um when it comes to the plan. But which is a separate, that's a just a submission on a plan change. But anyway, that's what I'm saying. This is a political decision about the rules. If they've put forestry, well, that's one thing. It's not just that. There's a, you know, is what the rules are. Um it depends on the councils, you know? Um but there's also things like nuisance uh and noise in the SNAs and there are other resource management um tools. Uh what depending on, you know, the detail. But I, so yeah, I think you.
We've tried, we've tried all of them and it hasn't worked. The mayor was funded by the forestry for her election campaign.
Yeah, that's right. So yeah, so I'm obviously, we're gonna run out of time and the others might want to say something, but um I just think. That, yeah, you you you've done really well in linking a lot of things together. There are some avenues. Um that I can think of. I mean, in terms of the regulatory captures, Transparency International are very interested in regulatory capture and writing. Um investigating that. Again, it's a voluntary body. Um uh under Suzanne Snively, now that's just changed, but when she was in charge, she was interested in environmental issues. I persuaded her that that was a good thing to follow. I just wasn't gonna do it all myself. Um and they've had some people writing reports on environmental transparency, mostly in to do with the reporting and monitoring. But regulatory capture is something they're very interested in. Um but so there are some things, and like you say, the investigative journalism. Um actually, the mayor will pick that up as well. Um but this is, yeah. I I don't know if there's other things like nuisance and, you know, actions and other legal solutions here. But I I think you've done really well in uh bringing all of those different aspects to light. So thank you very much for that.
I mean, what I think one thing that people aren't asking as well is where where are these, all these spray um operations? Where are they washing their their containers? Where are they, you know, because no one's checking anything. Where are they, you know, because no one's checking anything. And there's no safety, everything's outsourced, everybody's subcontracted. So there's all this fragmentation that means full ability to have, you know, terrible accidents and not taking any responsibility and no liability and full impunity.
Absolutely. I'm aware that we need to leave some space to have a break and also Hannah is our final speaker. Is there any just final questions from the commissioners for Nadine before we have a short break?
Well, just thank you for especially bringing in the regulatory capture stuff because that involves both forming the regulations in the first place and policing them after they've been formed. And if industry has a say in both those. So I also appreciated your bringing in human rights as a way of upleveling the whole normative question about what standards need to be used because regulations, especially if there's big capture, don't work so well. And human rights can bring a whole new perspective. So, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much, Nadine, and really appreciate your time and your expertise. And thank you very much. We're going to have a short break now. Do we want to have a five or 10 minute break, commissioners?
Ten would be quite nice. A cup of tea call in.
Let's have a, let's have a 10 minute break then. And then we'll hear the testimony of Hannah Blackmore about further pesticide roadside biosecurity, health, environmental and social impacts. And that will be our final testimony of the day. So thank you very much and have a nice cup of tea. Okay, welcome back, everybody. If we're back. This is the last session of the day. It's been an exhausting but very interesting day, I've got to say. I've got lots of notes I've taken, lots of things to look up. So our final speaker for the day is Hannah Blackmore, which some of you, many of you will already know. And Hannah's going to talk to us about pesticides in terms of the roadside and biosecurity and health environment and social impacts. And I know that she's an expert in the glyphosate ongoing debate. So Hannah, over to you.
Thank you, Azia, and thank you, everybody. It's, I have actually watched the entire thing this morning and I find myself in many respects, quite overwhelmed by the, the personal stories. Because this is what I've been experiencing for, for decades. And I would like to start by acknowledging the other people who have not just been rendered voiceless, but because of the very effect that chemicals have on their system, that they are completely unable to participate in things like this inquiry. And I mean, as I wrote to the commissioners, basically the exhaustion and the mind fog that has been described to me coupled with the stress of living through their experiences again, has seen many, many people completely unable to participate. And so I have been able to tell some of their stories to them by using a pseudonym or changing their details. But I would like to acknowledge those who have had the courage and the ability to be able to give a submission this morning and in the coming days. So basically my background is that I'm drawing on the research and advocacy for my participation in two biosecurity air spraying programs in Auckland and the, the ongoing weed management policy here in Auckland. So I'm going back basically to 1996. And the link between these programs is the fact that the that on the face of it, there is biosecurity emergency program has got nothing to do with the mundane spraying of grass and weeds. But the reality is, is that the common factor in all of this, it's the people. And they're the people who've been subject to the pesticide spraying. So if I explain that when in 96, I had only arrived in the country two years previously and rather like previous speakers, I was horrified to be suddenly involved in a campaign that was without precedence around the world. So there was an aerial spraying of a pest, an alien invader, a moss in the eastern suburbs, followed basically three years later by a similar one, painted apple moth out in the western suburbs. And at that time, I was a founder member of a group called STOP and STOP. Can't even remember what they are, the society targeting overuse of pesticides. And I then joined in out west. Because part of what I was doing with the, the STOP group was documenting the effects, the health effects and the incidents from the spraying of that pesticide. So when we were invited to participate out west, rather the same thing happened completely without me asking for it. I, because they knew who I was, people started ringing me up and telling me and writing to me about what was happening to them. So really what this is about is the people, these people have been silenced, even though we had a huge campaign out west and ultimately we had the, the people's inquiry, the first people's inquiry in 2006. And I was a convener of that. And, but really my, my involvement was with hearing and dealing with the impacts of the pesticide spraying on the people. And when I say to you that they were silenced, it's more that not only were they silenced, but their symptoms were trivialized, they were not believed, nobody has ever been believed because nobody can prove that it was the spray that caused their symptoms. But when I tell you is that it started in, in the eastern suburbs and it, it continued on with the painted apple moth such that thousands and thousands of people reporting health effects to, to the health service that was set up by the government. But the health service was basically saying, oh, there's no, there's no problems. And the same thing had happened with the eastern suburbs. That, that they basically said five months into the spraying program, we've only had nine health events reported. And we don't even think those are linked to the spray. At the same time, I was receiving hundreds of reports, severe reports from, from clusters of miscarriages and early births through to unremitting knee breaks, people being hospitalized. And ultimately we had over 600 reports of effects that were the subsequent, the, the public health service subsequently said, I can't remember their exact words, but it was along the lines of, ah, no, 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 these are all concerns and fears. And instead, they basically said that it was, you know, psychological, right? So this was sort of all in your head. And so in many respects, I don't want to cover this anymore, except to say that it was a catalyst for me to understand how people have been sidelined, how they have been disbelieved, how their effects had been negated. And I will just read to you one quote that came out of the people's inquiry from the report of that people's inquiry. And it was from a witness to that inquiry two years after the end of the spring. And she said, even after all this is over and I look better and I am better in myself. Emotionally, this is something unfortunately I don't think we'll get, ever get over because we never got acknowledged. We were made out that they were, that we were making it all up. And if they'd ever just kindly said, we are very sorry. But to have the cheek to say on top of it all, you did it to yourself, to me, was the cruelest thing they ever could have done to people. And really what happened was that soon after the Tassic Moss campaign had finished and just before we got into the painted apple moth campaign was the start of Auckland City getting adopted a policy of a chemical free city. And in 1999, 2000, this was adopted. And basically this meant that all the roadside spraying was to be by non-chemical means. Contractors could choose whichever process they wished, but it had to be non-chemical. And there were many parks that were already transitioning to, to spray free. And so for 10 years, that adopted policy meant that approximately two thirds of the entire Auckland city and the North Shore was chemical free. We did not have chemical sprays on the roads. And then in 2010, the disaster of the super city. And from the day that the super city took over, we have been struggling, fighting to not only retain the non-chemical policies that were already in place, but to try and transition the rest of the city to non-chemical as well. And because the new super city would not accept the extremely comprehensive policy that had been adopted, we had to start all over again. But in 2013, there was a new policy. And this was basically that chemicals should only be used as a mechanism of last resort and that we needed to transition the city. I will say to you that today, as of today, this has still not been implemented. And this is the main part of the story in that the council and the governments have basically done everything in their power to resist going non-chemical, to maintain the use of glyphosate on all the roads and the parks. Basically because it's the cheapest option. And the spray is safe. And over and over again, we hear it, I heard it this morning from all of them. There was no protection for the people because we are told over and over again, it doesn't matter what the, what the actual chemical is, the spray is safe. It only harms caterpillars or plants or whatever. And the EPA has passed it. You haven't been exposed. And even if you have been exposed, the spray is safe. And so it goes round and round in this circuitous route. But the result of all of this is that it's been it's exhausting. And the, the battle has been brutalizing because we have the highs and the lows. We have one council who wanted to adopt a complete moratorium, ban glyphosate completely. But we couldn't implement it because of rules that you cannot, you cannot force an incoming council to, to this supposed huge budget. So in the end, what happened was that the incoming mayor was gone and we were back to square one again. And this has happened over and over again. It doesn't matter how many plans we submit to. Long-term plans, local plans, any plan. It's all disregarded. It's not included. And even when it is, it's never been implemented. So the effect on people has, I mean, and I'm not affected. I am, I am thank God able to, able to do all of this simply because I'm healthy enough that I do not get affected by sprays or chemicals. But I see the effect on the people. And many of them would have loved to have come to this inquiry, but seriously, seriously, seriously unwell. And the stories that I heard today, I mean, and I have highlighted for the commissioners. And eventually everyone can read these written submissions. So there's never enough time to go through it. So I would actually just say to the commissioners, if there is a particular question that you want to ask from what I have written, then please do. But I did want to just to say, acknowledge these people because they are living in a, they're basically trapped in their homes. They are trapped in their circumstances and, and they live in hope. And we keep, we keep on trying to do this and we, we try and bring them hope that, oh, look, yes, we've got a submission going in. We've asked to speak to the council, then we get completely shot down or, oh, yes, yes, we're going to do it. Such that in spite of all of this, in spite of all our, our efforts to try and get policy adopted. Last year, we had to fight that final battle, wish to God it was a final battle, that they were proposing that half the city was still supposedly non-chemical. The rest of it, like the whole of South Auckland and West Auckland and Northland, the northern areas that fall under Auckland City have been sprayed with glyphosate. And we were demanding that these areas should be allowed to transition to having non-chemical. It was possible, it was affordable, we had contractors who could do it. So we proposed that this was the way to bring everybody out of glyphosate. What actually happened was at the meeting last year in November, council proposed instead that they would formulate that the entire city would go back to using glyphosate, but only half the amount. And we would, for the rest of it, we would, we would use an organic herbicide. When you actually looked at it, in fact, it was the same amount that they actually sprayed in, say, South Auckland. So in fact, the reality was that they were, to implement this policy, they were going to turn it all back to glyphosate. That was finally only overturned because we had been insisting for years that the solution, which was to go non-chemical, was not only practical. It had been in use for over a decade, particularly on the North Shore. And it was cheap. It was as cheap as glyphosate. It was no more than glyphosate. It had been done for 10 years. And for some reason, you know, we've never been believed, it's always been pushed to one side. And finally, at this meeting, one of the contractors had given one of the councillors a copy of their invoices of how much they were charging for non-chemical treatment on all the roads and the verges. And it was less than the proposed solution that was being offered by council. So we have been fighting this battle. It's still not being, it's still not being implemented because we said, look, it means that we can all go non-chemical. So, oh, well, you should go back to the officers, they'll draw up a new thing. Today, one year later, it's still not being implemented. It's still not being done. So when I hear, when I heard John an answer to a question saying that part of the reason why nobody will address the problems, the Kiwi industry is because it's worth billions. Okay. And therefore they can't afford, they can't afford to deal with it. So forget about it. But what I'm saying to you here is that of all places in the entire world, Auckland is the one place that has got the solution that can be implemented for no extra money. And we're still here. So when it comes down to it, the OIA's, the information that we have been through, we have asked for, we have uncovered the most appalling. I mean, and I, and I say that truly in the use of the word, the most appalling evidence of how council has fought from the day one of the new super city, basically, to prevent Of how council has fought from the day one of the new super city basically to prevent. Or continue the use of glyphosate. Now you say to yourself, what on earth, why would they do this? But they have been deliberately trying to stop implementing. A policy that would allow us to go non-chemical. Um. And as I say, the result of that means that people who have suffered for years. Um still have to go on suffering and I pray that this inquiry will finally bring all of this to light. And that the solutions are there and the only possible reason why. This has not been done before, is it in somehow and somewhere the chemical industry has captured. All the authorities, the EPA, why on earth? We're not even proposing at this point that the agricultural, you know, horticulture will have to stop using it or even the forestry. We are talking about the hundreds, the millions of people who get sprayed every single week, every single month. With glyphosate on their road sides and in the parks, we're not talking about them, we're just talking about this. And you get the feeling that they are holding on. That whatever they do, they must not allow anybody to succeed. Because then everywhere else will use this as an example, you know, countries and cities around the world will say, look. Auckland's done it, we can do it, so we have this, this, this battle here. And it is a huge battle because I have to use these terrible war analogies. That we cannot lose this one, we can win it, but how we do it? So go ahead, guys, ask questions.
Start Hannah by saying a number of thank yous. I mean, I know you well, I've worked with you for years and I've never said to you, thank you for the extraordinary amount of work you put into this issue. Over decades on behalf of other people, it is remarkable and you are to be honoured for it because it is really extraordinary. The fact that the battle is still going on is um, it's just mind-numbing, actually. The second thank you I want to make to you is something I should have said years ago and didn't. Thank you for monitoring the health of the people in West Auckland during the painted apple moth spraying. You are the only person who's done any community monitoring on pesticides in the whole of this country, ever. It happens in a lot of countries overseas, we don't do it here and it's it's long overdue and really time we did. So thank you for doing that because it was an extraordinary piece of work. Um now I've got a couple of questions for you, the first one relates to your submission. Uh appendix A, page five, table one of the project streetscape review. They've got a footnote there for how they arrived at their climate change um uh in impact, climate emission, carbon emissions. Of glyphosate and other weed management technologies. Are you able to submit that document that's footnoted in their report? Because I'd be deeply interested to know how they arrived at the um carbon emissions or the manufacture of glyphosate, because I've never been able to find that. And I don't think anybody else has. Auckland Council has, it would love to see it, uh otherwise would like to see it anyway to 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 show whether they actually have done a proper carbon analysis or not.
Yeah, yeah, I I think in the end, Barry, what will happen is that I'll put in an OIA. They'll wait the statutory twenty days, what twenty working days, then they'll reply saying we need more time, will there another twenty days? Then they'll send something and it won't be what you want and this has been our experience, it is one of the most terrible situations. You want, you know, to get this information, it's virtually impossible, but I will, I will look that up for you and if I can find it. I will send it to you guys.
The other option might be to ask the Waikiki local board to ask for it because I've just made some decisions based on the. Climate um change impact report from Auckland Council, so they might be able to ask for it too.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the second thing is, I mean, and this is an open-ended question, is what on earth is behind this extraordinary behaviour of Auckland Council? Um and they, as you said, they're doing everything in their power to ensure that glyphosate use continues and increases as much as possible. And to put the non-chemical technologies out of business. What are judicial, I know you mentioned a judicial review, would and and Catherine might be able to contribute to this. What a judicial review of the behaviour of Auckland Council um and the blatant misinformation of they've been propagating. For example, when they talked about the negative impacts of glyphosate, there actually weren't any there, they've completely failed to recognise that there are also. Environmental implications, so I don't know, if either of you could uh uh answer that question for me, thank you.
I sup- I suppose the first thing is, is that rather like John who, you know, who told us, you know. The amount of money he spent trying to get something and the fact that to go to the environment court or anywhere else is hugely expensive. The same thing would apply to a judicial review. And yes, we've been looking into this for quite a long time, we've been looking into the human rights. The breaches of the human rights are so obvious and and written down that um, you know, there would be. But to get even to get to the Human Rights Commission and to get to the tribunal will take years, we need results now. But with regard to a judicial review, I wrote to the mayor in twenty seventeen, basically on this point. Saying that in fact, and I had a, I had a um. Um I can't explain the word, there was um, there is a, what is called, when a, when a policy gets passed. Uh there is something called um legitimate expectations of the public. That legally adopted policy will be implemented and almost certainly that. Our, you know, our legitimate expectations have been frustrated deliberately. Um such that I've even got minutes of internal um committees, I don't think they knew what they were sending me. Who were basically saying, how do we not implement this policy and asking their legal department. Can you please advise us, do we have to implement this policy, is there a round, any way round not doing it? So I don't know whether Catherine's got any legal opinion on that, but I am certain. But we haven't got the money, we haven't got the expertise, we haven't got any lovely lawyers who would stand up and do this first pro bono.
So um so I'll first, maybe I'll tweet that last comment first, there um. There is an increasing number of lawyers who are taking on pro bono cases. Um the environmental law initiative um is one that has been funding. By all part funding um cases and there's, it's got, it's got a few barristers that are willing to help. Um but most of their work has been on behalf of environmental issues, not people. Um because they figured that's, that's an even greater gap. You know, there's even fewer people advocating for, say, those freshwater species that have got chemicals on the streams, not even testing those, so. At the moment, that's what their aim is, so there are some, there are people willing to help. Um and it, but it does depend on um getting a good assessment of a case to start with. You know, um they're not, you're not gonna file something because, yeah, you need to have a reasonably good chance of. Success to not then also be lumped with the fees of the other party if you lose. That's actually the biggest risk, um because uh, yeah, and and we have a particular legal. Not everybody has that same system and their legal sys-, you know, the the same approach in their legal system, but that is a, that's a key feature of ours. Um and while they may be fee set to a standard policy that the court will set a reasonable fee. It doesn't mean you get to employ a barris-, you know, a QC and and have to pay his exor-, you know, his or her um full fee, but you still. They're still not cheap and so it's not only, it's not just whether you get a pro bono lawyer, you have to have a really good case. Um and so you've got to choose the action, um and is it like a breach of statutory duty? Is there something judicially reviewable or is it, you know, i- is it not actually the case here, um most of those that go against central government? Um so you've usually got to find a statutory reason to to do something on a, on one of the council's duties. Um it's much harder um for the council decisions, but anyway, so yeah, it's, it's worth looking into and. Because of this complete lack, like particularly under the national government, which took the funding away from EDS who used to run a clinic. And an environmental, you know, RMA help um function, well, they don't have that funding anymore, they've got some really good RMA advice online. A really good guide, but that doesn't tell you whether your case, whether, you know, what you can do about a problem. That only tells you if you know what you're looking for under the RMA usually, um and what if your case is not under the RMA like this? Alright, um so, so there, yeah, you're right, there is a dearth of places and um. One thing that we, I mean, one thing I'd like to do, and I've already done with a couple of just cases on my own, is um get students to help. And start a, like a student-based clinic for helping this kind of thing, so that's, things like that are on the cards, but that's, you know, further down the track and. Um I I agree that, you know, it it sounds like the kind of thing that you can put to essays, you know, for students to investigate or an investigative journalist. But um certainly that stuff about the, the practice, I'm answering that last question first, that's obviously not the first place you go. I was really interested, I think we're gonna be running out of time, I was coming really interested um and maybe pursue it later. The, the stories you had in your submission, for example, about the no-spray areas and people. Like deliberately accidentally flouting those no-spray areas. Um it would maybe just, you know, for ease of their jobs, right? Uh absolutely appalling and so things like that, um I mean. It does, is it, is there negligence or the nuisance claims, I mean, again, there's all sorts of other things to go on um there, but it just seems that there are other. There are a lot of really obvious blatant breaches.
Yes.
Of various duties around that, um something has to be done about and the first thing is talking about them and bringing them to light.
Yeah.
Um and we can talk more about any other solutions later, but yeah, thank, thank you very much, um a fascinating, even though distressing. You know, appalling um set of in- information to have brought um before this public inquiry.
Okay, I want to start to wrap up if we can, is there any final questions for Hannah before we move to?
I have at least two or three.
I thought you might, Tom.
First of all, I mean, why are you still doing this? Because, I mean, I'm in the exact same boat, Hannah, I just, I wonder how, what's the next, how can anybody? What's, what can be done, you know, uh so um a couple of yes, yes or no questions. One is is maybe more um for Catherine, these pro bono, possible pro bono. Uh attorneys who might be able to take it, do they ever take on a case from a human rights perspective? Uh that's, that's just, that's a kind of a yes or no question because if they do, there might be some. You know, at least a novel approach there.
Can I, can I, I'll just briefly comment there, there are probably more human rights lawyers in New Zealand than environmental lawyers. Just in terms of their training, we've had human rights courses for years and not as many environmental and so, yeah, so I just.
And I would, I would comment, and I would comment because I didn't put it into, into my written submission. Um that in fact I have supported already two cases to the Human Rights Commission. About um the exposure for roadside weed spraying. And in both cases, there was a complete dismissal um of the authorities um to this, but. Both the complainants wanted to therefore take it on to the tribunal. And to ask the Director of Human Rights to take their case. And we had understood that the director will only take on a case where the result of the. Um you know, the, the investigation um would affect a lot more people than the people who were submitting, which obviously is the case. Um and secondly, that by the time we had been through months and months of this process. Both the submitters were totally and utterly exhausted. And their ability to recover from this meant that they have never taken it any further. Because they have never been well enough to be able to do it, which is back to my original thing is that. All of these things are being covered up and they're being um silenced and being pushed under a carpet, nobody knows about it.
Right.
Sorry, that's a bit of a long explanation.
Yeah, no, no, that makes a lot of sense.
We've been there, we have tried and I, and I have no way of knowing whether. Um I don't believe in this country, we're not like America, we can't do class actions. I can't, as far as the best of my knowledge, I can't take the human rights case um, you know, on behalf of others.
Sure, right, you have to have.
So, so that's something I've never really had time to look into, sorry, Tom, go on.
Yeah, and um just as a, one little tiny hopeful thing is in the climate game, you know, where. Nations are being brought uh before human rights courts and cases like your agenda and so on are being tried on human rights grounds and the whole Julia. Juliana case here in the US and all the state case, our children's trust state cases are rights-based cases. And they're starting to have some success, whereas human rights approaches to any other environmental things haven't gone anywhere in the last, you know, twenty, thirty years. So maybe that will make a little incursion in and people will start to think about human rights a little more positively. But, so given the hopelessness. I mean, that's what it feels like in some ways, is hopelessness about where to go and, you know, I I take it as a sort of article of faith that. That uh even in a hopeless situation, you you just keep going, you know. Uh you've, you've personified that. Um but in this situation now with our, with this uh inquiry, we're gonna have a report. What, so, you know, you've run up against brick walls. Um what can, what can you hope from this report, what, what, how, what kind of a structure, not structure? What kind of a purpose or aim would you see this report as having that might be, have some power behind it?
I would take and reach out, you know, there, my impression is that. There are so many things happening around the world, even, even the announcement a few months ago about. Um Bayer Monsanto uh withdrawing Monsanto from the home garden market. Shows this little chink, I believe and I get the feeling that 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 wall, that brick wall is actually quite fragile. And I feel that the, and that the authority of this, this people's inquiry. Might be sufficient to take down that wall. Um and and my final, my final sort of um rant and rave to you guys in my written submission. Which I understand will have all of these eventually up on, on, on our website. Um the People's Inquiry website for other people to read and in my final rant and rave. Um I I basically said to you, um why, um what's happened, why have um. It says, basically, um we've had all of these acts that had provisions to protect the health and safety of people and communities. Uh the Biosecurity Act, the RMA, the Hazner Act, the Health Act, all contain provisions. Um and so do none of these still stand, what have happened with them, where is public health on this? Um where is the EPA, what happened to the agricultural trespass bill? Um is that still languishing in a parliamentary draw somewhere? Um and and just really briefly, because the information that we have had, I heard. Um was it Shane who said that the, the New Zealand Poison Centre had told him. Oh no, there's only, it's very, very few pesticide cases. Um in fact, um you know, there was only four, well, it just so happened that part of the information that we got under OIA. Was when a public health department, when the um Auckland Regional Public Health Service asked the National Poison Centre. The answer that came back, um in the five years since um the super city formed, they had had two hundred and eight reports. Of injury from glyphosate in our Auckland region alone, that's a big difference. And when I say to you that part of that stuff was, was how Auckland Transport, who, who are the guys who go out, originally go out and spray all the road sides. They were trying to get the public health service to endorse their contin- they were trying to get the Public Health Service to endorse their continued use of glyphosate. And to the best of my knowledge, um, Regional Public Health Service has said no. They cannot endorse the use. But the, the Auckland Transport were saying there is no harm to humans from the use of glyphosate. So it's worth people, um, we have all this documented and for those who have, you know, it's just like a little newspaper column. We have, um, on our website, that's a weed management advisory website. We have, um, the history and timeline of the use of chemicals, um, in Auckland. And that's done in little columns, little snippets. Read that because that tells the entire story. It is the most fascinating. It took us ages to do this, me getting information from various places and, and resourcing it, but most of it came from OIA. So it's worth a read.
Thank you.
Shall we, um, shall we call it a day? Because I know that it's getting very late in the evening for poor old Tom in, uh, the other, the other side of the, of the ocean. Thank you. Thank you very much, Hannah, for your contribution and, um, and your ongoing, um, help. Um, with the organisation of, of this. And, um, I think Nora summed it, summed it up for us earlier. You know, what is it that keeps us motivated? It's the anger. You know, it's the sheer, it's the sheer anger at how poorly we are treated. And the fact that we do have a responsibility because we do know more than the average person about the corrupt way that we're, um, being harmed. And so, um, you know, part of our duty to society is standing up and making sure that other people um, become aware of it. Certainly one of the, the motives for doing the People's Inquiry in the first place. Um, so just a few closing question, uh, closing sort of comments, really summary from me. And then I'll hand over to Stephanie, who's going to, um, close the, uh, the session and then we'll be back tomorrow for more. Um, and some interesting, uh, presentations tomorrow. So today, um, we've heard from lots of different people, starting with John Leavers, who started us talking about the orchard spray drift of agro, um, agrochemicals and the way that he felt let down by the various government agencies. That's been a common theme throughout the day. Um, and Joe, who also, um, contributed from his perspective of the orchard spray issues and a very personal story as well from Lorraine in, um, Auckland about her exposure to in particular glyphosate. Um, and then we talked to, um, Shane, um, who, um, mentioned about his personal harm story from herbicides and his look, his attempt at looking at the solutions and being knocked back repeatedly. And Nora, um, very, um, articulately talking about the forestry as well as Nadine, who made, um, links to the, um, the international literature on that, which, um, very interesting. Um, and then finally Hannah, back to talking about glyphosate. And so I want to thank everybody, um, for the very interesting contributions that we've had. And that definitely will pick up on some of these themes again in the coming presentations that we've got planned and, and build on this knowledge even more going forward. And, and thank you very much to everybody for your patience and listening and active participation and good, interesting questions. Shall I hand over to you, Asha?
I just want to mention something before Stephanie closes us off. Um, uh, uh, links for tomorrow will go out this afternoon and then again tomorrow morning. So that will be in your inbox. Um, and send, please do send any messages through to our inbox. Um, you know, we can see everybody's there watching and many of you have been there all day with us, which is really, you know, amazing, you know, just it, we're, we're over six hours now. So good God, everybody, you know, I'm getting through this. I know I've been crying myself in the background and probably glad that Ursula's been managing this second half. So thank you. Um, thank you to everybody. Yeah.
Team effort. Thank you, everybody.
Were there any, uh, were there any last comments from other people before, before we let Stephanie close us off? Oh, she's gone.
All right. Just to, just to make note, Asha, that, um, we're gonna, um, make note of everybody, all the comments that everybody has been posting in the chat in the question and answers. Um, and at some point we'll, we'll go back and, and do follow-ups where necessary on, on all of those comments and suggestions and really, really useful, uh, links to various things. So thank you for that as well, everybody.
Actually, I do have a question. It's, it's probably unlikely that we'll ever have a written transcript of any of these uh, submissions. But it would be nice if there was, but I don't.
Yeah, that, that's definitely on our list, Tom, and it's something that the technology can help us do, even if it's in a, um, you know, shortened format. That's definitely something that, that we'll hope to contribute to later.
Thank you.
Yes, I was just going to ask for the people who are in watching, um, you know, when we intend putting up uh, the written submissions on the website and how soon we'll be able to get up, um, you know, these recordings for them to watch.
Um, well, the recordings, I think after the, after the hearing, the complete three days of the hearing, we're going to need some time to, to kind of do a little bit of editing and make it, make it actually watchable and upload it. So it won't be very quick, but hopefully within, within a week. Um, as.
And it might, it might be a good time just to say explicitly, those that are listening, uh, that we're always very keen to have extra support in these kinds of administrative um, issues. So if anybody does have expertise in that area and or wants to get involved or get a friend involved, then please do contact us by the website. And, um, we'll work together.
And as for the submissions, that, that, that is a huge job that we, that we have to spend some considerable time, um, going through. And, yeah, so, so on that, uh, not quickly. All right, we'll hand over to Stephanie.
Yourde, everyone. It's been a long day. It's been intense and quite emotional. Um, I've taken little notes of the themes. And it's a question of, um, how do we carry on? How do we have faith to that things will change? And this is what this inquiry is about. Today, you know, it's been quite, um, hard hearing many stories and we have um, other themes tomorrow and Saturday. And all together, we, um, we have faith that we will somehow help to turn around the word behemoth. I don't know what it is, some big monster that has captured people's minds and, and authorities. So we have faith. So I, I came across this, um, wise saying and, um, it goes like this. Ehara takutoa itetaa takitahi ingari hetoa takitini. My success is not mine alone. It is the success of the collective. So on that note, on that note, we will rest well and recharge and meet again tomorrow.
Yourde, everybody. Thank you very much. We'll be starting at 10am tomorrow. So, uh, we'll see some of you there. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and those listening too.
Yep. Signing off now.